Good evening, everybody. This council meeting of June 7th, 2022 is called to order. Councilmember Bowden, you lead us to the pledge, please. Thank you. Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowd.
There.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Inesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City Manager Devine would like to mention one.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We would like to add an item to Section D under presentations would be item D2. And it's a proclamation to celebrate Pride Month.
Thank you. All right. Does the council have any board reports to share? I'd just like to say, thank everyone for the Forest Festival that was involved in setting that up and staff. It was a really great turnout. Car show is a little thin, but that's always based on weather and the weather was not nice. We enjoyed it very much. All right.
Mayor Inesco, this Friday is the Timmerlin Regional Library grand reopening celebration. I know we've all been invited, but they did extend that invitation to the public. So if you're interested in seeing the refreshed space at Shelton Timmerlin Library, that'll start at 11 and run until 2 o'clock.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. Has everyone had a chance to read the agenda? And so is there a motion to approve the agendas published?
I move.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me, Councilor McDowell made the motion, Councilor Gutierrez, for second.
I think he just.
I think we both said it at the exact same time.
Yeah. Okay.
So yes, that's what I recorded.
He said so moved, so I figured he was just going off of me. So, okay.
Okay.
All right. All opposed. Motion carries. All right. Tonight, we have a presentation from the Shelton Mason County Chamber and Heidi will present that for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. It's my pleasure on behalf of the Shelton Mason County Chamber of Commerce to offer this report for our first quarter visitor information services. So. That's not working. I'll let you go ahead and advance this, please. Okay, so first off, the total number of visitors served in 20, in first quarter of 2022 has increased by 229% compared to that same period last year. It is of note to mention that it's also increased 10% over 2019 numbers. So we're surpassing our pre-COVID numbers as far as visitors to the city and the county. Phone calls have increased over that period as well. And then we added some memorabilia in June of 2021 that has been quite popular. We also have replaced some of the signage on the caboose. So we now have it accessible via buzzer. So when people buzz us and from the chamber office, we can remote them in. It's kind of like the same thing you'd find in a school or hospital. So that we can monitor who's accessing that. So that's open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. And then we also replaced the placard which tells the history of the caboose itself as well. If you'll go ahead and. I guess I had that on both pages, but as you can see, we've added signage to the caboose. Go ahead and advance. Okay, so our top chamber Facebook post was the Flower Basket fundraiser. As you know, the chamber is responsible for fundraising for those in partnership with the city and Hood Canal Communications. You can see our Facebook information there as far as our Hood Canal Visitor Center page, the chamber page, and then our group pages. Just to remind you, the Eat Local Mason County Group was created at the onset of the pandemic so that we can tell people take out options and delivery options. So we have just over 4,000 members on that page. And our Mason County Jobseekers Group has just shy of 4,000 members. And a total of 945 jobs were posted in this group in 2021. The reach by city there, you can see Shelton by far surpasses any other city. I do like the fact that Olympia is the number two on there. So obviously people are checking what's happening in Mason County and how to get the information. So I'm going to advance. Here's the information on our Google landing page and some of the analytics and traffic for that. So the top three queries that lead people to our page. This is particular to the caboose. And then a little bit of how they're accessing those. So if it's searching via computer or cell phone. Go ahead and advance that. Yeah, and that's, that's the information that I provided for you guys for this. Do you have any questions or is there anything you'd like to see in the future on this report?
Questions?
I love that picture.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is a proclamation LGBTQ plus month and Councilmember Gutierrez is going to read that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So City Shelton, June 2022 Pride Month. Whereas the Shelton City Council recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2022 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus Pride Month. And whereas Washington State has a longstanding tradition of upholding the dignity of the individual, supporting legal equality and fair treatment for all people, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, and ensuring that acts of discrimination will not be tolerated. And whereas members of the LGBTQ plus communities contribute to our city's success in measurable ways. And whereas the Shelton City Council observes June as a time to celebrate our dynamic LGBTQ plus community and foster a dialogue to promote healthy, safe, and prosperous school climates and communities for all. And whereas the LGBTQ plus community continues to be a target of violence, harassment, and discrimination by many, and yet continues to thrive with support of LGBTQ plus affirming spaces, agencies, and allies. And whereas because of the acts of courage of the millions who came out and spoke out to demand justice and those quietly toiled and pushed for progress, our country has made great strides in recognizing what those brave individuals longed to be true in their hearts, that no person should be judged by anything but the content of their character. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council, Shelton City Council recognizes June 2022 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus Pride Month in the city of Shelton. All people are encouraged to join in celebrating diversity and promoting inclusion and equal protection under the law. And to join together to eliminate discriminatory policies toward any culture, race, or group. Signed to stay on the 7th day of June by your Mayor, Mayor Caneska. What wins tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of emails that we received, one that I would like to read in the record. But we do have public commentary right after this. We wanted to make sure that people had an opportunity to speak if they would like to. Just to mention emails in support of the proclamation from Kelly Adalozola and from Susan Kerchoff. And I had a letter that was asked to be read into the record in full. So I'll go ahead and read that now. This is from Jill McKnight. And she says, Dear councilmembers, my name is Jill McKnight, and I have been an active member of the Shelton community since moving here five years ago. Thank you so much for the unequivocal support for the rights, freedoms, and equal treatment of LGBTQ plus people by making this important proclamation in Shelton. As a certified life coach, it is incredibly satisfying to see Shelton join many communities across the country to ensure the inclusivity of all. As a small town, we are all made better by wholeheartedly accepting every person as an important valuable member of our community. In truth, we are all far more alike than not, and coming together to support one another significantly improves the quality of life here in Shelton. Furthermore, as the leaders of Shelton being a symbol of tolerance models correct and appropriate behavior. This is a, this is particularly important for young people, many of whom are often the most vulnerable in society. According to the Trevor Report in November 2021, almost half of LGBTQ youth in small towns and rural areas state that their community is somewhat or very, in quotes, unaccepting of LGBTQ people. In fact, the rates of suicide among LGBTQ plus youth are significantly higher in rural locations than young people that identify as cisgender and straight. Understanding that they matter and will be accepted, no matter their sexual orientation and gender identity encourages strong development and growth, ultimately leading to positive community involvement. Lots of problems in contemporary society call for a myriad of complex solutions. Today, as councilmembers, you have the tremendous privilege of passing a simple and meaningful resolution that all people may benefit from. The proclamation that all in the city of Shelton are welcome. This leads the way for other organizations to follow suit and provide real change in our communities. The increase in positive mental health when inclusivity and tolerance are embraced is enormous. Thank you again for taking this step and demonstrating vital leadership in Shelton. I sincerely appreciate your efforts. Words regards.
Right. Moving on to public comment. Donna, do anybody sign up for public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first public comment is from Mary Eagleson.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I am really pleased to see all of you here tonight. What I have to say is not as happy as I would want to be. I went to the Forest Festival. I sat there and watched the parade. I saw young kids. I saw older people. And then we had the float for the city council. And it was really hard for me to sit there because a lot of people know how much I care about having a city council. But when I see three people out of our four people, we're the only three that showed up on the float. I sat there and I was discouraged and a little bit aggravated because I see older people, little kids, everybody else showing up. And I know maybe somebody didn't feel good or whatever, but four people out of seven didn't show up to be on that float, that somebody took the time to clean up, to sparkle that, that truck, and to decorate that truck, and took their time to drive that truck. You were very inconsiderate not to show up. If anybody has a business, you could have put a note on your door. I'm on the city council in the parade, be back in an hour. I just think it's disrespectful for the city council. We only have two big parades in this town during the year. And the Forest Festival is our biggest. And you represent the city of Shelton. You are representatives. You got voted in because the people, they trust you. They count on you. And you let the people down. And I don't think that's acceptable. I think there needs to be a little more organization and be a little more prepared for when it comes time for the Forest Festival. Maybe you didn't want to ride in a dump truck. Well, then let's get a float. And somebody come up with an idea to make a float so you'll feel more comfortable on a float than in a big truck. But that man took his time. His people cleaned up that truck for you. It was shiny, decorated, it was nice. And we only have three people. And two of those three people technically could have not come because they have medical problems. So, you know, I, I'm just saying, I heard from other people. They said, where's the city council? And I didn't have any answers. So I'm just saying, maybe there could be a little more preparation and being a little more prepared to be there for the, for the events that we want to see the city council show up or something like that. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Donna, does anyone else sign up?
Yes, Reverend Jenny Lynn.
I've never done this before, so I'm really nervous, but I want to say thank you very much for allowing me to do this. And say how very proud I am of our community and our council or full council for taking the step forward in our community by making Pride Month acceptable for everybody. Because in moving forward, we have to look to the littles. We have to look to the ones that are watching us. And what they see us do and what they see us say and what they find acceptable and not acceptable. Because I have raised four children and my fifth one. And been involved with a lot of children who have left school because of being born. Some of them go to the streets for drugs. Some of them are homeless. Who knows what kind of homes they came from? The homes might have been accepting. Maybe the schools weren't. Maybe the counselors weren't. And we, as the adults in this community have to be accountable and look down to our little ones and raise them up. Even if a little boy wanted to wear a pink tutu. Or a little girl who wants to cut her hair short, be called Bill, or anything in between. Because they deserve unconditional love.
Thank you.
And I have two more people signed up for live. And then I have some folks on Zoom as well. Our next public comment is from Dean Jewitt.
So I'm not going to speak my own words. I'm going to read from a Facebook page, Safe Seattle. And this is regarding our permitted camping that I am adamantly against. The city of Shelton, population just over 10,000, is considering a plan to permit homeless camps of up to 30 people on private property. The camps could theoretically be placed in someone's yard, but it's hard to see any homeowner taking this on. Given that they'd require to provide drinking water, sanitation, exterior lighting, and stuff for the campers unless they lived in a large property, they'd be inviting friction with the neighbors whom they'd have to notify in advance of their intent to host a camp. And the article from the Shelton Mason County Journal doesn't say whether there's a maximum number of permits that will be issued if the proposal becomes law, which suggests they're not expecting a rush of applicants. In all likelihood, it'll be one or two. I suspect that there's a particular church or group behind this proposal, and that's why it's coming up now. When asked by Shelton council member, why Shelton needed to have a permitted homeless camp, city manager Jeff Knighton said, I think to find resources, make resources available to people so we can make sure people are not sleeping in their cars, that type of thing. Something tells me Mr. Knighton's no more enthused about this proposal than the mayor or any other council members. But at least he has to try to present it neutrally. Analysis. Shelton might think it's being tough with these conditions. But a determined group of church ladies won't have a problem promising to abide by them. Once the camp is there, many of those conditions will be ignored, and the city won't do anything to the sanctioned camp. Supposedly, no one with an arrest warrant will be allowed in, but the ordinance has no mechanism for warrant checks. The sponsored camp's share runs in Seattle originally had a probation against campers with warrants too. But that soon went by the wayside, and there's no reason to think Shelton's experience will be any different. As with Seattle sanctioned camps, there won't be any requirements for the church hosts to verify that anyone in the camp is from that area. So instead of helping Shelton's on homeless, a camp could end up hosting people from wherever across the country as they come into our area. City manager Knighton said the camps would provide homeless people with resources and keep them from sleeping in their cars. But that's weak sauce. Many car campers in Seattle chose to stay in their cars and RVs over a tent. Even a tent in a sanctioned camp, either because they felt safer or it was more convenient if they didn't, if they simply didn't like the clam. And the most glaring omission is Shelton's proposed ordinance is it doesn't require a camp sponsored by case managers or a pathway to permanent housing. You could enter into a camp and exit with no, with no proposed way to get back, get yourself back on, on your feet. So anyway, I'm going to make sure that this is forwarded to everybody so that you can read it, run for yourselves. But like I said, I adamantly oppose this.
Thank you, Dean.
Our next public comment is from Jackie Jewitt.
Good evening. We took you for the opportunity to speak with you. So first, I just have a couple of questions, and I know that you can't answer me, but when we were here several weeks ago, you know, we signed the paper out there which stated that if you would like a response to your comments, then put your address. So I have not received any response. So my question to the council is, am I ever going to receive a response so that I know as a community member here in Shelton that I am valued and my voice is heard? That's all I'm going to say about that. The next thing is, is leading off of what my husband Dean said about the proposed ordinance. So there are a couple of things that I have questions about. So first, is this just a Band-Aid that's eventually going to lead to a bigger Band-Aid? Or is there research and data that was referenced to in support of this particular action steps the council is pursuing and proposing? Is there data and research? I'm a data person. So also for the record, my husband and myself request copies or viable links to access and research the data that clearly shows success following implementation for at least two to four years. And so in addition, is there research and data that the council has, has come upon that might not have success in this particular ordinance and making our sanctioned camps? So, and if so, like what are the barriers? What are some things that hinder those places that tried to implement this, did implement it, but after two to four years, the data wasn't there to support that it was helping our homeless people? So that's my other question. So I, I am, I totally agree with my husband. And there's, there's, there's issues. I have been talking to many colleagues at, at work. And frankly, people are sick and tired of driving downtown and seeing people doing illegal drugs on our corners. That's not okay. Our kids see that. I'm a teacher. I don't want my kids seeing that. You shouldn't want your kids, you should not want your community's kids seeing that. What is the matter? So we need to use data and research to find a solution to this issue. Because it is seriously out of control. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, now we have some folks on Zoom. And our first person is Dacia Dunbar.
Good evening, Shelton City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Dasha Dunbar, and I'm a business and homeowner in the city of Shelton. I own Shelton Counseling and work as a marriage and family therapist and mental health professional. I am an ally to the LGBTQ community. And I am here today to express gratitude for the proclamation supporting pride and the LGBTQ community. Growing a community means bringing together an inclusive diversification of people with new thoughts, ideas, cultures, business aspirations, and goals. It is vitally important that we choose to stand up for those who need our voice. And it is imperative that we see ourselves politicians, government staff, health workers, members of families, land and business owners as allies to the LGBTQ community. It is important we support them because they are us. Data from 2018 points to suicide is the leading cause of death among young people aged 10 to 24. And gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, queer in questioning youth are significantly at risk. LGBTQ youth are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers. The Trevor Project estimates that 1.8 million LGBTQ youth ages 13 to 24 seriously consider suicide each year in the US, and at least one attempts suicide every 45 seconds. This means that 80 young people will attempt to end their life within this hour. The Trevor Project's 2022 National Survey on LGBTQ Youth Mental Health found that 45% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, including more than half of transgender and non-binary youth. These numbers are staggering and alarming. These youth are not likely those who are being supported in their families, schools, and communities. They are living in shame and fear. These youth live among us. They are our children, our grandchildren, our neighbors, our employees, our friends, and most importantly, our future. Every human has a need to connect, to be seen, heard, and respected for who they authentically are. We cannot tolerate a community who does not include everyone when making decisions for the well-being of all. I have heard the words of the hetero identifying or straight community as, why can't we have a straight pride? If I'm being honest, I've also thought the same at one time. The reason we need pride is because the rest of the 335 days a year, it is a straight world. It's acceptable for heterosexual people to hold hands in public, express excitement for their upcoming date without ridicule, and express their hopes and dreams for their futures with their chosen partners. It's okay for straight people to bring their significant other to work and community events because doing so won't impact their chances for employment, housing, or an election.
Excuse me, Dasha.
Yes.
You've reached your three-minute time limit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Jim Morrell.
Mayor Inesco, Deputy Mayor Schmidt, Councilmembers Bowd, Gutierrez, McDowell, Peterson, and Sharon. Jim Morrell, Mason County resident and community leader here in the city of Shelton. I would have loved to have joined you in person, but tomorrow on behalf of credit unions, I'll be visiting lawmakers here in Washington, DC. Thank you for recognizing June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus Pride Month. As a community leader who is a member of the community recognized in this proclamation, as many of you who are friends of mine know this about me, I would like to express my personal gratitude for the proclamation you have made today. For many in our community, sharing who you are is scary and something many feel would bring more harm than good. Unfortunately, there is messaging viewed today in this community frequently at First and Railroad and elsewhere that degrades LGBTQ plus individuals. Unequal treatment of LGBTQ plus people not only causes personal harm, it also causes economic harm. On the flip side, inclusive policies can boost productivity for businesses and our community. Your commitment to promotion of inclusion and commitment to eliminate discriminatory policies is enormously positive. It demonstrates a positive, caring vision for the city. A city that can and should accept diversity of any culture, race, or group. A city that includes all members of our community. A city that states diversity is real and inclusion is necessary. Your commitment makes a difference that goes far beyond the words on a page. It sets a positive tone that we should appreciate all people. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Our next public comment is from Billy Thomas.
Hi, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this special proclamation. I get the pleasure of meeting many people in my community, but for those of you I've not met yet, my name is Billy Thomas. Community involvement around equity and inclusion is very important to me, and I believe that this is what this proclamation accomplishes so well. June is Pride Month. Throughout the world, pride festivals and parades celebrate the anniversary of the Stonewall riots and the recognition and inclusion of LGBTQ plus people in our society. Now, thanks to this proclamation, pride is celebrated right here in Shelton. We need pride now more. We need pride now more than ever to support LGBTQ plus community members and to show them that equity matters, inclusion matters, and respect matters. Yes, LGBTQ plus people continue to face violence and discrimination, but proclamations of inclusion and dignity help put a stop to that. Proclamations like this show that we have leaders, allies and role models in our city to offer safe spaces, stand up for what's right and recognize the cultural contributions and acts of courage that this proclamation mentions. So as I mentioned before, community involvement around equity and inclusion is very important to me. In my day job, I am the Marketing Director for Peninsula Credit Union in Shelton. I also volunteer with the Shelton Family YMCA, Mason General Hospital Foundation, Sound Learning, and the Shelton Mason County Chamber. Hi Heidi. I'm also a proud member of the LGBTQ plus community. The proclamation of Pride Month in Shelton provides dignity, equality and safety for me and my husband to live openly and authentically, and I can't thank all of you enough for that. I commend this proclamation and the actions of our city council members to create safe, equitable spaces for our LGBT plus community members. Thank you for your support and happy pride.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next public comment is from Clara Robbins.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing this time to speak. Um, I'm a proud representative for the Shelton Family Y. Um, I'm the membership director up there and I am pleased to be here tonight to add my voice in support of the LGBTQ plus Pride Month and the increased awareness. I think Billy said it perfectly before this. Um, at the Y, we strive to be a place that is welcoming to everyone. Um, we hope to be a place where people feel safe to be as they are, who they are and where they are. We see a lot of youth and teens coming into our facility and we understand deeply how many struggles young people are working through today, let alone their own personal struggles of identity. So we hope that the Y can not only be a place where kids, families and seniors can find wellness, but that they can find their community and they can exist in their community. Um, we are so proud that this also includes the LGBTQ community and we hope to continue to raise that up, bringing awareness and bringing safe spaces to Shelton. Um, I look forward to working with the city and other organizations to better serve our community and specifically finding ways that we can better show up for our LGBTQ kids so that they understand that they're not only loved, but that they are supported and that, um, you know, they have a bright future ahead of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last Zoom public comment is from Kevin Schilling.
Good evening, uh, City Council of Shelton and good evening, City of Shelton. Uh, my name is Kevin Schilling. I'm the Deputy Mayor of Burien, actually, and a proud property owner in the city of Shelton. Um, I thought it was important for me today to zoom in and to urge the city council in Shelton to pass this important proclamation. The city of Burien just passed our LGBTQ pride proclamation yesterday. And I would love to see Shelton join in its Puget Sound neighbors in welcoming and showing pride to its LGBTQ population in the city of Shelton. Um, I want to highlight one section of your warehouse clause at the beginning that designates this month to be a part of showing respect and pride for the dignity of all people, especially when it comes to finding access to treatment, to healthcare, to nondiscrimination laws and clauses in society uh, for LGBTQ people. Um, speaking as a member of the LGBTQ community and wanting to express support for all members of it within the city of Shelton and the Puget Sound, I request and ask for you to pass this uh, and show that support to the members of your community as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, we're gonna recess from our regular meeting and open a public hearing. Community Development Director Mark Siegler is going to, do I need to do this? Community Director Mark Siegler is going to share information updating the chapter 18 of Shelton's book code.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Um, tonight, uh, we're addressing chapter 18, which is our building construction administrative code. You may um, recall um, this chapter coming before you when uh, the state adopts either the international building code, national fire code, or requires city to make uh, changes to our flood management program. Well, in response to our development code steering committee and citizen group that's reviewing all of our development codes, we brought this back to, to that committee uh, with some updates, really to clarify and bring more um, uh, certainty, I guess, to our community, our building community, our development community that is hard to navigate throughout the building and fire codes. Um, then if you have taken a look at those books, they're look at Sean's desk and uh, the, the rows of books, uh, they're, they're, they're quite difficult to navigate. Um, there's also some generalities within those codes, whereas it um, it, it addresses appeals that might, might be general and not specific to the city of Shelton like uh, here where we um, we direct appeals to the hearings under the city of Shelton. Within the fire, um, it addresses um, fire services in general. We once certainly point out our partners, partnership with Central Mason Fire and uh, Deputy Fire Marshal Keith Rees is here, uh, as well as Sean Carlson, our building official, sort of subject matter experts here to answer any questions you might have specific to the code. The one, I guess, appendix or addition to this um, this section of code is that we did not is the International Property Maintenance Code. Uh, we've talked about that pretty extensively internally and with our development code committee. Uh, they recommended moving forward without this section there felt like it was um, maybe a little too um, too specific in certain areas. Um, but it's certainly something we could bring back, um, amend portions of this code or roll some of those into our nuisance code. Um, within the Shelton Municipal Code to address some of the issues that we're dealing with in our community that we want to, want to address uh, in the future. There's no changes within the flood damage portion of this code that was recently updated. And there's no specific changes within um, the 2018, so it's 2018 International Fire Code, 2018 International Building Code, which has all the other chapters like the residential code, existing building code, plumbing, mechanical. Fuel, fuel and gas code, uh, what Sean to remind me. Um, so those, those are existing portions of code that were adopted by the state and adopted by the city back in last year in 2021. Um, actually, maybe you're pretty close to this time after it was delayed um, because of some COVID response from, from the governor's office. Um, so at this point, happy to uh, answer any questions or I'll pass up some of my subject matter experts here to answer any questions that you may have.
If we have a public testimony first? Okay. Uh, can we get a reading of ordinance number 1988 dash 0522?
Ordinance number 1988 dash 0522. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, repealing and replacing title 18 of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to building and construction.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move to place ordinance number 1988 dash 0522 on June 1st, 2022.
One second.
All right, do we have any questions or comments for staff?
I just have one question. The, what do we, what are we looking at for fire and flood damage prevention? I mean, especially the flood prevention part.
So FEMA has specific regulations on flood damage prevention. And typically that's what, when a structure is located within the 100 or 500 year flood zone and the um, the ability to either floodproof those structures or get them out of the flood height. So it might be raising that uh, that structure or at least the finished floor level, one foot above the flood zone or floodproofing it, um, flood gates at doors. So water doesn't intrude into those openings in the building. Looking at Jason because uh, he's uh, he's dealing with this every day, but that's, that's kind of in a nutshell what, what we look at for flood damage prevention.
Public buildings and private homes.
Any, any structure, even additions, um, HVAC units, anything like that. And it, it protects the structure, um, but also affects um, your insurance in the city of Shelton. So if we're found to not administer um, the flood regulations, it could negate flood insurance in the city of Shelton. So.
So when, let's say, city goes to build, build something, goes to go to the property, that's just, you know.
It's a good example.
Then you are required to do flood prevention and fire in there also. Okay, I got it. I think we talked about this a long time ago.
We uh, we updated our flood prevention code in about 17, and so FEMA will come out and they will actually um, adopt new regulations and strongly encourage local jurisdictions to adopt those regulations as well uh, to remain um, current um, in the NFIB.
Okay, thank you.
No questions.
Right.
It's not specifically about this. I just have all you guys in one room and I'm not paying for it. Uh, downtown, how can we make it easier for businesses to be able to actually get fire suppression with sprinklers? Cause it's pretty pricey right now.
Um, boy. Fairly broad question, right? On the utility, right? Typically, there, there is separate service.
Yeah.
Correct? Separate service and then um, from there, you might be able to answer what the specific requirements are.
Uh, key threats, the fire marshal. Uh, to be honest, I'd have to do some research into it. I know there's a lot of different formats, different cities across the country have taken uh, with it. From even as far as, you know, the cities, a city in Texas gave a loan to all businesses to get sprinkler systems and 100-year loan. Um, so there's been all sorts of different ways it's been done. As far as reducing costs, we do offer the three different types of sprinkler system. NFPA 13, which is our commercial, definitely the most spendy, but it's meant to protect uh, life and property. And then you start going into the 13R residential, 13D dwelling, which is more directed towards just saving life um, and not property. So I can do some more research into it, but off the top of my head, I don't, I'm not sure.
I just know we've had some, some businesses downtown have a few issues with that, have to restructure what they want to do and it's just something I think we need. Thank you. I appreciate it.
In general, uh, in general, it's, it's really important that, that individuals reach out to the city.
Yeah.
Right?
Understood.
And, and then we can provide that guidance on what's required based on the occupancy, the construction of the building and what their intent is for use. And then maybe, you know, some of the three options can be provided to um, to support the staff as well. So we encourage our development community, our business owners to reach out to us and, and ask, uh, ask for additional information prior to moving forward.
Thank you.
So what if someone doesn't have a clue about flood, flood and fire suppression? I mean, but they, that they're building a new building or remodeling, they would be enlightened when they come in to get their permits, right?
Certainly, we, we always offer pre-submission conference. So that's a, that's a more of an informal application process where you could simply, you can even hand draw some house plans, rough sketch of your, of a site plan of your, of your building lot. Tell us what you want to do. We'll provide the regulations that might apply in that situation. That includes flood prevention, that includes meeting fire and building life safety code, uh, utility connections, the fees associated with all of those um, all those factors that may, that may uh, apply to that situation. So we try to give as much information upfront so you can have your due diligence moving forward with your project.
Okay.
Yep, or a registered design professional certainly can help. And when you, in a commercial um, situation, um, buildings over 4,000 square feet, state um, code requires a registered design professional. And those folks have the training, have the knowledge, have the ability to design a structure that meets those codes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just a comment. So uh, yeah, I, I'd like this as presented. Thanks to the, the code committee for putting this forward. I don't have really any input here. Um, um, be interesting to see what comments kind of flow in here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, but otherwise, I just want to thank the group for their work. I'd also like them to reconsider the property maintenance code. Um, would be uh, happy to do a driving tour of the city um, and talk about that. Uh, Mayor Nisco and I spent what, an hour and a half or two hours with a couple of property owners. Um, terrible situations and we're, you know, we're complaint-based and these are the things that are going on for a year plus. And uh, I'm, I'm wanting to see a little bit more horsepower behind, behind this so we can catch, you know, catch these things a little bit more proactively before they become a giant issue. Um, and you know, I understand uh, there's a delicate balance and uh, you know, you know, preserving people's property rights and I respect that. But I do believe uh, you know, there are significant uh, number of folks in the community who are not doing their part and uh, there's, there's a corrective process that should be followed. So um, I would, I would suggest that the committee take another look at that and I would be happy to entertain um, you know, some back and forth on that. There's still reservations. Thank you.
One question about um, we have very unique geography here because we have creeks coming through and we have salmon running up. And how will this code affect salmon runs or fisheries and water quality? Talk about floodways.
So our, uh, there's different sections of the code that help address that. Our, our critical areas ordinance affects that. So we, we have buffers for our streams, wetlands uh, that provide for maintenance habitat, um, stormwater uh, code. So how you treat stormwater, how you discharge it is, is another way. Um, as well as, you know, there, there are some, not necessarily within the flood, because that's more about protecting property, uh, but certainly the critical areas ordinance is going to be most specific.
More about how to protect the fish, not use the property, how to protect the fish. Like, do we, if there, if FEMA comes down or whoever comes down and says you need this, this and this, and they, you need a bridge or a culprit or something, is that like, gonna be funded somehow? Will there be funding for that or will we have to come up with?
So uh, with uh, FEMA, you're talking about uh, uh, the National Flood Insurance Program. NFIB is what Mark mentioned earlier. Uh, and you have what they call the firm maps and I can't remember what firm stands for, but it's basically, it shows you where the floodways are and where the flood plains are. Uh, with the critical areas ordinance, that's something we adopt yeah, in conjunction with uh, the Department of Ecology from Washington State. Though, and, and also the stormwater regulations the council adopted late last year, early this year, little while ago. Uh, those are intended to protect the uh, riverine habitat. Uh, but the, the flood insurance program, uh, those two things don't necessarily intersect. Uh, but yeah, we do have the buffers and it's based on best available science is how that's, how it's structured.
Just sometimes I see fish struggling on these streets because they're flooded and they're coming upstream and like, what are we doing? You know, so.
There's uh, what, a 30s? I don't, I don't want to quote the number because I can't remember. There is a large uh, amount of money going into agencies across the state, particularly in our area in Washington, Washington, to increase uh, fish path. Fish passage. Uh, one of those projects happened right down here at Shelton Matlock Road and Highway 101 last year, two years ago. Uh, but there's a significant amount of dollars going into that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I just have a quick suggestion under 18 dot 06040, the manufactured homes. The last 15 years, manufactured homes aren't mobile homes anymore. They're not metal, ugly, nasty buildings. They're actually, they've been pretty nice, especially the last 10 years. Maybe we can increase that five-year threshold to maybe seven or 10 years. And maybe they can use them for some of these infill lots rather than moving these people, putting these in the county when we have a city lot available. Um, that would be a suggestion because they're not like they used to be. And I understand why we did five years, 30 years ago, because they were metal and they had bars on them and wheels. And I mean, they're just not that anymore and they have not been like that in 10 years or 15 even. So I would, that would suggest that we increase the five years, maybe just a few years and, you know.
We can take a look and see what best practices.
That was, that was a topic of conversation with the Development Review Committee and um, fairly lengthy conversation about how manufactured homes hold value, how they affect existing neighborhoods, new neighborhoods. Um, uh, there was strong sentiment that uh, that uh, double-wide manufactured homes are still requirement, that, that five-year requirement would, would remain. They would be pit set as well. So it looked like a, a single-family home and the As well, so it looked like a a single family home and the recent uh chapter twenty. Twenty point neighborhood residential zone, um twenty oh eight, thank you, uh and twenty point six four, the design. Uh requirements would apply to manufactured homes as well, stick as well. So they'd have to meet that. Very exciting, you know. If it's a single family home, they'd have to, you know, have three of the of of the combined architectural and um design elements. So. Wrapping your windows and all the corners would trim any any uh walls opening, having twenty square feet minimum of covered front porch, front entry. Um what is variable, variable siding treatments, dormers and a number of things, you know, that we that we present in the menu would apply to manufactured homes as well.
I would imagine they have them. I looked at those about eight years ago before I bought my house here in town and they're pretty nice, actually.
Could you recite the section again?
Oh, one eight dot zero six dot zero four zero.
They still have to meet energy code too, though, correct?
Yeah.
Well. Too far back.
Yeah. And they're they are all inspected by Department Labor and Industries prior to being set on site. So a factory assembled home or a manufactured home, I'm only Sean here again. Um is inspected through Labor and Industries before it's set on site. The city will then uh verify design standards. Uh and then the the foundation or setting or seismic seismic installation, um utility connections. Help me out. If they have a if they have a if they have a cover, they want to attach a porch or entryway to them, correct?
They can attach a porch or or an entryway, but it needs standing or or self support.
But we wouldn't do that.
We will.
Correct. The city of Shelton.
Mary. Yes?
No.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry. Yeah, sorry, Mary. We can uh hook you up with Mark later. We can hook you up with Mark later. How's that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other council questions? All right, we have a motion in a second to place ordinance number one nine eight eight dash zero five two two on June twenty first, twenty twenty two, City Council. Action agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This public hearing is closed and. Our first action item is the appointment of Historic Preservation Board members. Senior Planner Jason Doz has information for us.
All right, thank you, Mayor Anisco and members of the council. Um hoping to fill the ranks of our Historic Preservation Board uh over the. Covid era, which we're still experiencing to some degree. Um all of our existing board members' terms expire. So in April. We put out a request on social media for volunteers. Um we have received seven, coincidentally. Which the the code, chapter two point seven six of the Shelton Municipal Code governs uh historic preservation. Um has a seven board member, seven board membership uh cap. We received seven. I'm glad about that because it meant we really didn't have to delve into and pick and choose and uh. I didn't want to be in a position, I was going to make you do the hard work, frankly. I wasn't going to be in a position where I was recommending one over the other. That was my plan anyway. Um. The folks we received application for applications from are are really wide ranging. If you read the staff report, I mean, we've got. Folks that have been on the Historic Preservation before recently, you know, the terms expired over the pandemic, people that had been on the board previously in the nineties for better than a decade. We have uh contractors represented. We have fashion designers, um art uh degree holders, business management. I mean, I'm going off recollection here. It really is an interesting mix, which is i- if you read the criteria of the board, that what's desired, you know, people with an interest in historic preservation, people with diverse backgrounds. In the trades, in architecture, in construction. Um this board helps us as staff review the management of our two historic districts. And multiple historic properties and uh structures that are on the 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 local historic register. They review changes to those properties. If somebody wants to do additions. They did they review new construction in the historic districts. Um they help the city. If we're doing projects in a historic district, we we. Run those by the historic board. They provide input. Um and they really, i- it's intended to help promote the historic resources we have in the city and. I I I should just read them off. So we're we're recommending, hopefully, that the council, I'm getting close to being the a historic resource myself. So I have to my glasses to read the actual names. So don't miss anyone. Um we're recommending all seven be appointed tonight, asking, hopefully, we can take action tonight. Bill Busaka, these are in no particular order. Bill Busaka, Tristan Starr, Mike Olson, Kathleen Wong, Tristan Smith. Lori Ducat and Dana Anderson. And uh. That's all I have for you this evening. I'm hoping. You'd consider all seven to be appointed, but the options are point one, a point three, a point all seven, a point nine. It is at the council's discretion.
Thank you, Jason. Donna, we have any public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion.
I move that the Shelton City Council appoint all seven applicants for appointment to the Shelton City Historic Preservation Board, outlined in Mr. Doz's brief.
Say.
All right. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. And I don't know if you could answer it tonight or even look into it, but. I'll talk I'll talk to you later if it's complicated.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
I know about half of these names and I uh I think that they all care about our downtown, so.
Absolutely. I I didn't include their their uh letters requesting to be in, but I mean, it's clear each of them has a.
Yeah.
A a love of historic resources and wants to participate in helping to promote and preserve them.
Yep. All righty, questions or comments? All right, we have a motion in a second to appoint all seven applicants for appointment to the City of Shelton Historic Preservation Board as outlined by staff's brief. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right. The next appointment of Parks Recreation Advisory Committee members, Community Development Mark Legler has details for us.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um to follow up on Mr. Doz's briefing here, we have another advisory committee um. Appointment. Uh we recently received a um resignation from Deborah Dozier, who was appointed to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee with a term through December thirty first, twenty twenty five. We received two letters of interest. Um and staff is recommending Sarah DeHart to fill uh the position on uh vacated by Ms. Dozier. Uh Dana Anderson actually submitted a letter of interest as well, but as uh her eminent appointment on Historic Preservation Board, I thought um. We'd certainly recommend Sarah DeHart uh for the council's appointment as uh it suffers broader participation for more members of our community to assist us in our in our endeavors. So. Um the staff's recommendation is to point Sarah DeHart to uh fill Mr. Dozier's term through December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Mark. Donna, do we have a comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to appoint Sarah DeHart to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Comments or questions?
I'll second that.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion in a second to appoint Sarah DeHart to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our last action item is an ordinance regarding animal control. City Manager Jeff Knight has information for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Members of Council. City staff, uh as you know, has been analyzing proposed updates municipal code uh to ensure clarity and concise regulations. Uh for uh application here in the city. One of the sections that we have identified is, well, two of them actually, uh Shelton Municipal Code seven point oh four and seven point oh eight. We've had several uh proposed changes to the code along with several meetings where we've modified uh the code based on council direction. Uh starting in October of twenty twenty one. And then uh following on February fifteenth uh this year and April twelfth of this year. So we have further revised the ordinance, uh including we changed a little bit of the section just to make sure that that uh it flowed correctly the way it was intended to flow. Uh and we uh changed the um. The time period for uh uh animals in the kennel uh to three business days based on council direction. And you have the both the strike through version of the code where you can see the changes that we've made uh and the clean copy version. Uh and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Donna, do we have a comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one public comment, written public comment uh for this code directly and uh I'd be happy to reveal them when you're ready.
Okay. Go ahead.
Right. Uh dated June sixth yesterday, uh to whom it may concern. For years, we have been dealing with continual damage to our cars and our property from other people's cats. Over the years, we have spent a considerable amount of money on various cat deterrents such as ultrasonic pest deterrent. Motion sensor sprinklers and citrus based scents to try and stop this damage, but it never ends. The hoods of our cars continue or the, excuse me, I'll start that paragraph over. The hoods of our cars suffer continuous scratches and damage from multiple cats constantly jumping on them. The last couple of weeks, we have been refreshing our landscaping and putting new beauty bark down and it's been turned into a giant litter box, not to mention the damaged plants. We have spent a lot of time and money trying to protect our garden boxes and have had to put fencing around them to try to keep the cats out. The cats have ruined our lawn furniture by climbing on it, have turned our bird feeders into an all you can eat buffet. We have ten thousand dollars worth of fencing that does nothing to stop this. The cats have done considerable damage to some of our fencing by sharpening their claws on. We are tired of all the money and time spent on this problem. We don't feel that we should have to spend a few hours a week. Uh we get away from work having to deal with other people's cats and their destruction. The owners of the cats are not being held accountable for their animals' behavior. Even the pet adoption places make you sign a contract saying you will keep your cat inside for its own safety. If dogs were to be causing this amount of damage to our property, there are repercussions for the owners because the dog is supposed to be licensed. And on their owner's property, but for some reason, cats are allowed to be very destructive with no ordinances in place. As cat owners whose animals never bothered anyone because they lived inside, we do not understand why all animals in the city limits are not required to be licensed. And stay on their owner's property. How much more of our time and money are we expected to spend on this? Attached is a sample with many pictures and we can uh forward that to you. Uh thank you for your time, Eric and Joanna Rasmussen.
Right. Donna, maybe we have a reading of ordinance number one nine eight three dash zero one two two.
Ordinance number one nine eight three dash zero one two two, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending Title seven and Section seven point zero two point. Zero one zero of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to animal control.
All right, do we have a motion?
I have a motion to amend.
Uh first, we need a a motion on the table and then we can do that.
All right, we have a motion.
I move to a dot where it's number one nine eight three dash zero one two two as presented.
Second. Okay.
A motion to amend.
Go for it.
Okay. Uh now, section number seven point zero eight point zero four zero at the end. I wanted to change a. Um I wanted to change it to up to five chickens on parcels, five thousand nine hundred ninety nine feet, square feet or less. And then up to twelve chickens on parcels, six thousand square feet to one acre in the neighborhood residential zone. And roosters will still be explicitly prohibited. But I really want, I really, should I make comment now or just?
Uh.
I think you make a motion. There's a second, then there's a schedule.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now discussion.
Okay.
Just on the amendment.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. Uh I believe limiting chickens to five is insufficient for families. Um however, because we are decreasing the slot size to under six thousand feet possibly in the future, five might be the carrying capacity of that that site. However, in lots, six thousand feet and above, which is the six thousand is the general. Most lots are six thousand feet or above. Um you need about twelve chickens to feed a family of four in this in to have food security and. I know this from personal experience because during the pandemic, everyone's going crazy. I had eight to ten eggs every day with anything I could get out of my garden and I was not worried at all. So there's self sufficiency, food security. I'm not running around looking for food and it's right there in our backyards and this is Shelton. You know, this is a farming community and I think uh chickens are very important to that. Feral cats, however. Feral, I don't know if they're, well, anyway, that's another topic, but um. Uh they might get into your chickens, but if you keep your chickens well in your house, in your coop or chicken, chicken patio, I don't know. Um you can uh. Care, you can carry at least twelve chickens on a nice sized lot. And if you don't keep your chickens well, they will fall prey to neighborhood animals. So um you hear all these things about your chickens are running around. Well, they're not going to be running around long. You know, because stray dog or stray cat will will pick them up. So um really good chicken owners will take care of their chickens and. Um we'll make sure that um not only will the refuse for the chickens be composted or re-put into the garden, so we're not bringing in more nitrogen from other places. Um it's a very good system of ecology and permaculture and um being um energy and food self sufficient. So um that's what I have to say about chickens.
All right, any other comment or question?
I totally agree with you, Miguel. Um I think I had if up to eight or nine at one point and. You. It works well. It works well and gives food to the community and your family. So, thank you.
All right, any more comments and questions? The motion on the floor is to amend um seven point zero four zero eight.
Seven point zero eight point oh four oh eight.
Okay, seven point zero eight point zero four zero eight. And you would like. Up to five chickens on a parcel for five thousand nine hundred square feet or less and up to twelve chickens on a parcel, six thousand square feet and one acre. Neighborhood residential zones, roosters are explicitly prohibited. All right, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Um all in favor? Go for it.
Aye.
Opposed.
Uh Councilor Vidias, Councilmember Anisco, Councilmember uh McDowell and Councilmember Peterson.
I would not.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All opposed.
I'm opting out of this.
Okay. So motion carries.
Five one one, yep.
All right, okay. And is there any other comments or?
Yeah, just a clarification. Unless I'm mistaken, it seems we have a contradiction still within the code regarding the leash length. So in the initial section one point nine, it says twenty feet for the leash, but in seven point oh four one seven oh, it limits it to eight feet. So I would move that we amend section seven point oh two point oh one oh. Um section one nine um to eight feet.
All right, I'll second that.
So everything will be eight. You're consistent throughout the code.
Yes.
Okay. Hey. There's a motion in a second.
I'll second that. Would you second? I, okay, I think that's okay. There's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, any other discussion on this ordinance?
Uh I'd like to say that eight feet is a appropriate length if you're going to keep your dog under control and twelve feet is, dogs get to pull you around too much. So I think that is a very good. Um. Conclusion to this is making it eight feet. Thank you, Councilmember Peterson.
All right. Any other? Comments or questions on the on the ordinance, the entire ordinance? Okay, I would like to um to go back and discuss the cats again. Um I just think it's silly to register cats. I don't think we want our code enforcement people out chasing cats. And frankly, you're not going to catch a cat. You're going to have to trap a cat. So we're going to be leaving traps all over town for cats and then then what? We're gonna have a a cat pound. Um I would like to move to remove cats from this ordinance.
Amendment, second then, so seven point oh four.
What if, or the motion's passed, we?
No, you we passed the the eight feet, uh eight feet leash uh consistent route and we pass or council passed by a five one one vote. The amendment uh for chickens up to five uh on lots by on neighborhood residentially zone lots, five thousand nine hundred ninety nine square feet or smaller. And up to twelve on lots, neighborhood residential lots, six thousand square feet up to one acre. And up to twelve on lots, neighborhood residential lots, six thousand square feet up to one acre. Uh, but the main motion is still on the floor, well, the main motion was on the floor and then I believe Mayor Inesco is making a second or a third amended. Motion to remove cats from the registration requirement.
I'm going to go ahead and move to, to table ordinance number one nine eight three dash zero one two two until the first meeting in October, hopefully we can have this conversation offline and get ourselves squarely. Does that need a second? Please, second.
Well, there was, there's a motion on the floor.
Which takes precedence.
Yeah, so that, that takes precedent, so, uh, Councilmember Inesco made the motion, was there a second to the removing cats from the registration requirement? There was, okay. Is it putting Jurassic Parliament to use?
Alright, any discussion on the amended motion to remove cats from the registration?
Well, I live in Catville and I'm sure. She's right around the corner and, and I was out in my yard today and three or four cats just mosey through and have to call. Someone to come and get those cats, by the time someone would get there, they would be gone. So I just think that it's. Take the cats off.
Councilmember Peterson?
I do not support the amendment, I don't think there's anything here that would change the way that cats are currently living within the city limits, it just allows us to. Um, know that they're licensed and who their owners are if they are brought into a facility and, or if they are causing damage, nuisance cats is handled separately within the ordinance. I think licensing for me is a matter of getting pets reunited with their families and I think that should be for all of our animals, so I do not support the amendment.
If you would have seen the house, the yard that. Debbie Mayor and I saw the other day, you would want our code enforcement out dealing with these derelict properties and not chasing cats, I'm telling you that. We have better things for code enforcement to do than to go out chasing cats and trapping cats, I mean, we'll have to go buy traps probably, we probably don't even have cat traps. So, um. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, well, we're not putting like a vendetta out on cats, it's about having a rule, so we have something that we can follow and we can. Actually enforce more things, but we don't have any type of rule there, makes it a lot harder to follow.
So you want code enforcement out chasing cats rather than?
Point of order, this is not a back and forth, each council member is afforded an opportunity to speak and this is not a point for conversation.
I'm going to side with the homeowner and provide a commentary this evening, that is a consistent message that I've been hearing throughout the community. I'm responding to that in an appropriate way, I believe, by, by moving this ordinance forward as.
Any other comment? There is a motion and a second on the floor to amend. Oh my gosh, we lost now.
Just cat, just cat registration.
Okay, it's a cat registration, um, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.
We call, for our point of order with the city clerk, please call the roll out app.
Call for revision.
So if the, the question on the floor is whether, uh. To remove cats. Uh, from the registration requirement of the ordinance.
Yes.
So if, uh, just because I want to make sure we get this right, uh, can we do a roll call vote?
Okay.
Please.
Councilmember Bode? How do you vote on this item?
I'm a little confused now, I, I don't, I, I want to keep the cats, I want to register cats.
And that would be a no vote.
Then I'm a no, yeah.
Are you writing this down, City Manager?
I am.
Okay, Councilmember Sherman, what is your vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez, what is your vote?
Yes.
Marinesco?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt?
No.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Peterson?
No.
So by four, by a vote of four to three, uh, we will remove cats from the registration requirement.
Thank you. Alright, so now on the original ordinance. One nine eight three dash zero one two two.
As amended.
As amended, we have a motion, the second to approve number. One nine eight three dash zero one two two amended as, well, I guess not presented anymore, as amended, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
No.
So.
Four, four, three, motion carries.
Alright, we're coming to the end of our night, Jeff, will you give us your city manager report?
I sure will, so a couple of things I wanted to mention, um, and it was mentioned earlier during the council reports, but the Forest Festival was, uh, there was a great turnout for that. Uh, even though the weather was not nearly, uh, what we, any of us, I think, would have liked. Uh, but it was, uh, it was a great event and I'm glad to get that back going again after a. Two year hiatus, something like that, it's been quite a while, uh, but very happy to see that. Uh, we have all of your shirts this evening, uh, provided those shirts with, uh, City of Shelton, Councilmember. Uh, notations on them, uh, they're black, I thought about getting white, but I'm not sure how long that would last. So, uh, we got, uh, got those black shirts. And, uh, wanted to make sure that you had those available for those council members that are traveling to the Association of Washington Cities Conference in Vancouver. The week of June twenty first. Uh, we, uh, there are four of you going, I believe, and will leave immediately after the council meeting, uh, scheduled for June twenty first. Uh, and also as a reminder, uh, the new federal holiday, uh, in June teen. Is June nineteenth, but because that falls on Sunday, that Monday will be, uh, will be a city holiday, so the city will be closed, we'll make sure that we advertise that as much as we can. Next, uh. The homelessness task force, uh, that Councilmember McDowell introduced the idea at our last council meeting. I've contacted a number of people that would like to see participate on that group, I've heard back from the vast majority of them. Uh, but I am waiting to hear back from the remainder, but we'll start that group before the end of this month, uh, so we can start looking at community based solutions for that.
Interesting question, you say task force, is there a specific task?
Well, we chose task force specifically because it's a limited duration. From what I understand, uh, the task, the group, the committee that, uh, the commission of that I put together at the end of twenty thirteen. Got into, uh, what project managers call scope creep and didn't. Unfortunately, we're able to come to a concrete report, there is a concrete report that's available, but then it continued along after that. We wanted to use the term task force to denote a specific timeframe. Uh, for concrete recommendations that this group can bring to the city council for consideration. So that's kind of why that was chosen. Um, let's see here. Uh, right at the end of May, on the twenty seventh, two Fridays ago, uh, council went through their strategic planning exercise. And came up with, uh, with your new values, uh, with your values. Along with goals and some implementation steps, I've been working on putting that together into a coherent document that I'll share with council soon, make sure. I hit all the high points, we've got all the right colors on there, uh, so that we can, uh, we can see that and then we'll start to distribute that and make sure that the community is aware of what those, uh, what those are. Then finally, on looking ahead, uh, next Tuesday, you'll hear a discussion about the Public Works Lay Down Yard. Uh, how the funding plan for that location, uh, how we're looking to get that done. Um, also again on the twenty first, uh, right before we, uh, several of us leave for the Association of Washington Cities Conference. Uh, S M P D meeting, uh, will be that evening, we'll start at five forty five, I believe, uh, for that meeting. And then at six o'clock, you'll hear. Uh, presentations on the development code consultant, uh, potential to have someone to help us with that. And, uh, budget supplemental, uh, for twenty twenty two to make sure that, uh, council is aware of all the projects that we have ongoing. Especially in light of the rising costs for, uh, what we're, what we're looking at, it's pretty stunning. But want to make sure you're fully aware of that. Uh, and finally, you'll hear on the Action Agenda, Chapter eighteen, uh, the presentation that you're tonight from Directors of them. And that's all I have, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for City Manager?
Uh, no questions, just want to say I owe my thank you to the municipal board and district court staff on their work with implementing the therapeutic court program and obtaining that grant. We're starting to see, uh, positive things come from that, uh, on the front of, uh, you know, substance addiction and friends and related and. When we, when we have, uh, the pumped jail, we have other options that help us, uh, work through those issues and get people on the right path and then. I'm grateful for our outside of box thinking. Figure out.
I will make sure to pass that along, thank you.
Yes.
One comment, um, can we start something about stray dogs and cats in the neighborhood? Um, I mean, we're in the future, um, I will, I, I listened to that, to the man's comments and yeah, that, but I'm not sure if those are. Cats that are people own, if they're feral. You know, also there are a lot of dogs that get out and I've had a lot of predation on my flock. And all over the place and for the past three or four years it's gotten worse. Um, and I, I hear the witness city residents are, I feel that and I had a stray dog. Take one of my ducks by the neck and broke its neck and I got it home and. Made it home to die and I was just crushed by that and, um, I, I hear that man's story about all the damage that the cats do and. Um, my dog is often at the window like trying to chase cats away, you know, so there is a problem. Of stray cats and dogs in the city and I'm glad that we added a animal control officer. Um, but I think there needs to be more done, we, we need to strengthen our, um. Agreements with the local agencies, adopt a pet and kitten rescue and whoever else we've had, um, agreements with and we, we might need to. Trap more cats, but I don't think the solution was going to be. At the cost of, you know, charging people once a year to register their cats, so, um. I'd like us in the future as a council to come together to talk about this problem and, um. And make sure that there's a solution that, um, that everyone in the community can feel good about.
We can, uh, I'll talk to, uh, code enforcement officers and, uh, police, and see what kind of program we can come up with that will address that.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions for City Manager? Does the council have any new items for discussion? I would just like to ask the public to look, read the, the camping, um, on private property carefully. There's a lot of misconceptions in that news report that was read to us, you, there will not be camps in our backyard. In somebody's backyard, there's a lot to that ordinance and it is under discussion, it's not even a inter business item. Um, so I would ask the public to read that carefully, it's, it's, it's not what it, what it was purposed to be or. So I would, yeah, that is all I have. Alright, if there's nothing else, our next council meeting will be, will be the Tuesday, the twenty first at six P M, but we also have a study session June fourteenth at six P M. This meeting is adjourned at seven twenty two P M.
Recording stopped.